...our streets and neighborhoods. It's one reason we have a good and growing city. This fall, as the weather changes, we can expect changes as children go to school. Protect them from the winter weather and traffic as they make their way to school. Our fire department and city maintenance crews are still hard at work in a new fire station on the south side of town as Meridian grows south at an alarming rate. The new Amazon distribution center of a thousand workers is going up next to Meridian, and the impact will certainly affect many of our city functions. Ten Mile Road is undergoing reconstruction this fall, and our prayer is for the safety of workers and the general public as work progresses this fall. A new school is being planned west of the city. We pray this change happens safely and quickly. Lastly, we're saying goodbye to our longtime mayor, Tammy. As she has said, ends her career of public service in the next few weeks, we just pray that her retirement will be restful and long. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah.
I love it. Thank you.
This is generally when Larry Woodard leads us in prayer is generally an overview of the city of Meridian. And you just heard it. Thank you, Larry. He's reporting to God, and I'm glad it's still a good one. And I would like to welcome our troop in the front row. Thank you for joining us. We always love to see our scouts in the audience, so thank you. Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
You were able to tackle 9A in a work session. So we're going to rearrange one item and move 9H, which is the Silverstone Apartments, to be the new 9A. And that is the one change, so I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, and just to make note to any that might be here for 9H, that's being requested to continue, and so we've moved it to the top so we can understand that. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as changed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item five, our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
There were no changes as published, so I move we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
Alize, there were no items moved from the consent agenda. Counsel, I have nothing of note to add to the announcements, other than we do have trunk or treat this week, and hope you're all ready to see the streets of our downtown filled with all kinds of fun little characters. They come in all shapes and sizes, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Isn't there a town hall meeting coming up?
Oh, no, town hall tomorrow night. Good point. Tomorrow night at Meadow Lake Village, we would love to have all of you in attendance as well. It's unplugged, so we have asked residents of Meadow Lake Village and went out on social media asking for questions that citizens would like to have answered. It's never too late, so if you have questions you'd like to submit that will be answered at our town hall meeting, we'd love to hear from you, and we'll be live streaming it. So if you can't join us, you can check in online, and we'll bring the answers, if we can. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cavanagh, for reminding me about that. Okay, item eight, under future meeting topics, Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, there are actually two sign-ins. One is for compression breaks, which is on your agenda tonight. The other is referencing a project that is actually an active hearing application with the Planning and Zoning Commission that is scheduled to be heard Thursday.
Okay, and just to note that if you signed up under the public comment, if it is regarding an active application, we can only hear it through the public process. So that public hearing is on Thursday night, so if you need further clarification, if you'll talk to our clerk, he can give you additional information.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Also, just to add, if you're unable to attend that meeting, then you can email the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission so it becomes part of the public record.
Yes. Thank you.
Good point.
Okay, if there's nothing else, Mr. Clerk, item 9A, which is 9H, this is requesting continuance. No request for continuance is for granted. We will want to hear the reason behind the request. I will open the public hearing for H. 2019-0099, and ask staff the basis behind the request for continuance.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So you've had a chance to read the staff report, and essentially what's happening is, just for clarification for the audience members as well, is this property is actually taking two paths as they go forward. So a little bit of history, and then I'll share the continuance a little bit with you. So essentially, the DA restricts the number of units on this particular property. Because the DA controls the number of units, the applicant has to have the DA amend it first before, and the CUP mod has to go to Planning and Zoning Commission. So therefore, the council will act on the DA mod, and we schedule the conditional use permit modification for P and Z on the same weeks in anticipation to help the applicant move forward through the construction process of this project. Now, the reason for the continuance is, as we evaluated the conceptual development plan, we realized that the applicant should probably lose some of the units and add some more open space as part of the project. And so those were some recommendations that we had provided to you in our staff report. The applicant got the staff report and wanted some time to analyze that request and see what they could do to amend those plans, to see if that would work for their client. And that's why they've requested a continuance. Right now, in their email to you, they haven't requested a date certain. My recommendation is, at the earliest that we continue this to, if you choose to do so, is November 12th. That way it gives staff adequate time to react to any changes the applicant might bring forward, so that we can bring forward either a memo or modify the staff report, so you can have the most current changes to that project before you, as you take action on it. But certainly, if you don't want to honor the request for continuance this evening, staff is ready to present the project to you and move forward with the recommendation as stated in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Bill. So, counsel, you have kind of three different options to pursue. You can ask the applicant and make a decision on whether to continue this. You can continue it with re-noticing and mailing similar to what you've done in the past, or you can hear the project this evening. So I will ask you at this point for discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I would like to hear from the applicant and see, make sure that if we do continue this, we're getting a date that gives them ample time to make the changes that need to be made.
And I'm curious, how many in the audience tonight are here on this item? If you'll raise your hand. Okay? Thank you. Would the applicant like to comment? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Rob Powell with Dave Evans Construction. The applicant's address is 7761 West Riverside, Suite 100, Garden City.
Thank you.
We agree with kind of Bill's synopsis of the reasoning behind us requesting the continuance. This is a big project. It's a complicated project. There's a lot of parts to it. One of the requested conditions of approval is to decrease the number of units by 12, and that could really make or break the project for us. We just received the staff report late Friday and just need a little bit more time to kind of work with our design team, also our clients, to see the feasibility. We'd love to comply with that, but we need to look into those things. A continuance would also give us a little bit more time to kind of analyze some of staff's concerns and see if there's maybe even other solutions that could work better for that. So that's the reason.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think Councilmember Mylum had inquired about the date. Staff had suggested November 12th.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
We like that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
You know, I don't necessarily love continuing items, but I just want to say thank you for being proactive and trying to, you know, make those changes and make this a better project before bringing it and hearing public testimony, I think.
Oh, thank you. I would also add that we've been, we've really tried to communicate well with the neighbors. A lot of those, earlier today, we let them, at least kind of one of the representatives of the neighbors, know that we were going to request this, and I'm sure a lot of those neighbors aren't here because of that. A lot of those neighbors oppose our project, and we'd probably have a better chance. But out of fairness to them as well, I think a continuance would be appropriate.
I appreciate that you let the neighbors know, and that's, I appreciate that you told us that, because I kind of was thinking there would be more people as well.
Yeah, and I apologize for those who didn't hear in advance. Like I said, we got the staff report late Friday. We've been in contact with staff yesterday and today and tried to do it earlier than that. So there's a few neighbors who showed up here, and I apologize that they didn't know about it before.
Well, now they'll have an opportunity to talk to you one-on-one.
Mm-hmm.
Out in the lobby.
Yeah.
Ready, go.
Counsel, any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. So at this point, counsel, you do have a couple of citizens, and the problem with asking for public comment on an application that will, is most likely to change, or maybe not, but providing testimony on something that could look different when it comes back to council is awkward. But counsel, what would you like to do at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we continue. Item number H-2019-0099 to November 12th.
Second? I have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for Silverstone Apartments, H. 2019-0099 to November 12th. All those in favor?
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I was going to cut in a little quick discussion for it. I think.
Mr. Borton.
Sorry, I'm supportive of the motion, but to the applicant's comments on communication with the neighbors, which is fantastic.
We noticed.
The staff comments, which reference some redesign, and there's going to be some new renderings, I assume that it would be really helpful for those to be shared with the, probably the neighborhood group, an email list that you've got prior to the meeting, if they got a chance to review it, makes that communication and comment on the 12th much more productive, so.
I guess, did the motion intend to address public noticing?
Yes, I was, Madam Mayor, thank you for saying that. I would like also to add to that motion that the applicant re-notes and be responsible for the cost of that re-noticing.
Second agree.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Madam Mayor, I guess just for those that are, the public that's in attendance, are they able to attend that meeting on the 12th?
If you cannot, we would love to get your comments in writing, and if you can't, we'll figure out how to take your testimony.
Madam Mayor, as far as noticing, the earliest we could get in Meridian press, if we re-noticed tomorrow, would be November 1st, which would not meet the guidelines statutorily for noticing. So we would either have to go to November 19th or change your motion regarding the noticing.
Thank you. That's an important detail.
It is.
Madam Mayor. You know, I typically am in favor of re-noticing. Appears that the applicant's doing an adequate job of communicating with the neighbors. This is a meeting that was before us tonight. We're continuing it. I don't think that there's been any action by the applicant that is adverse to the public. So I'm not supportive of requiring the applicant to re-note or to pay for it. I think that we can embrace the Meridian way and educate the public via Nextdoor, through social media, but requiring signage and posting in the newspaper, to me, doesn't seem necessary, given that we're just continuing this.
It's consistent to what we've done in the past, but we do have a motion on the table, and the motion is to continue this to November 12th, and since we hear it can't meet noticing processes, we either need a new motion or.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to change that date to the 19th of November, if that's okay.
I'd second agree.
Second agrees.
So the motion is to continue this to November 19th.
Madam Mayor, that is the night of the comp plan.
Oh.
Probably not the best night to have a comp.
No.
The night of the comp plan is going to be consumed with the comprehensive plan. True.
Madam Mayor, we can re-note via Nextdoor and our website. We just couldn't statutorily meet the deadline for newspaper and postcards, but we could certainly reach out, and we do have a lot of public testimony received, so we could email them, anybody who's provided comment that it's been continued. And then the partner application of this is being heard, Planning and Zoning, Thursday, where I believe they're also requesting a continuance. So there will be several ways the public will be notified that the continuance is happening, if you choose November 19th.
And Mr. Clerk, could, since we already have the mailing list, is there not a chance that we can do mailers before November 12?
We absolutely can. We could, Madam Mayor, we could mail those as early as tomorrow. We just.
It's just the newspaper notice, okay.
And it could still be in the newspaper prior to then. It just would not be in the newspaper 14 days prior.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not really meeting the code as far as that, but it's an additional step we could do, and I believe Mr. Neri can correct me if I'm wrong, but we could certainly do that, because we've noticed before. We just couldn't count that as the 14 days.
Okay. Mr. Neri, anything you want to add?
Madam Mayor, no, Mr. Johnson's right. I mean, as long as, if the direction is not to necessarily meet the statutory notice, but provide the noticing as Mr. Johnson's office can provide, I think that's adequate. We were just wanting to make sure we weren't violating the ordinance or the statutory rules.
Okay, one more try, Mr. Burnt.
Seriously?
Well, yeah, because right now you're continuing it to the 19th.
Madam Mayor, I move that we continue this item to the 12th and not require any type of formal noticing. However, we can maybe send out mailers and do the things necessary in which to notify as many citizens as possible via Nextdoor and other methods. Is that good?
Seconded.
Yes, it was seconded, so it sounds good to me. The motion is to continue this to November 12th with the noticing that we can do without the newspaper.
Wait, just think about this a little bit more.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want to try another?
That would be good.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item 9B, final plat for H. 2019-0113. This applicant has also requested a continuance to November 6, 2019. Mr. Parsons, any comments on this?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, essentially what happened is the applicant has modified their landscape plan since we've processed the final plat application for you, so they've asked for that to be tabled, and staff is requesting that they provide us a new open space exhibit to analyze the open space with Phase 2, and that's why it's actually being tabled at this point, to get us that information, so we can make sure that the plat conforms to the approved, blemmerate plat, and the landscape plan approved of that project.
Thank you. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Not for me. Madam Mayor.
And Mr. Borton.
Will we continue item 9B, H. 2019-0113 to November 6?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue item 9B to November 6. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alize, must carry. Okay, item 9C is continue public hearing for public comment regarding a proposed pilot project for city facility business hours, to consider a pilot in November and December for, to continue 45 hours of having our city hall and city facilities open, but to have a Monday through Thursday, 8 to 6, and a Friday, 9 to 1, or 8 to 1. Counsel, since we talked about this last week, I did attend mayor's forum last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and this was actually an item of discussion of the cities that participated. Around 35% of them have altered their business hours for their citizens to try and do two things. One, to offer more convenient hours after a typical work week, so residents on their way home can do their business on their way home instead during their work hour. And the second area was similar to the discussions that we have had in terms of trying to offer citizens or our employees more flexibility in their work schedules. So I will ask if there's any questions from counsel at this time, and then I'll ask Mr. Clerk if there's anyone signed up. Mr. Clerk, is there anyone signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, there is one person signed in, Mr. Terry Tate.
Okay, Mr. Tate. This is a public hearing, and we have done a poll on Nextdoor. We've asked via our social media on trying to get public comment on what they think of new hours of operation. We've gotten a number of comments and feedback, but is there anyone here who would like to offer comments? Okay? Well, counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
With the opportunities for public comment having been made over multiple hearings, receiving that, I move we close the public hearing on item 9C.
I have a motion and a second to close public comment period. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alize.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move it along. I think we had talked about this last week. We were short a couple of council members. So just time to gauge desire to move or not on this thing. I'd express my support of it, not because I know it's going to work, but because I appreciate the intent behind it, and I think we might learn a lot of positives from what does work. And I think, quite frankly, the extended hours to 6 is one thing we're going to try and incorporate, but the fact that Madam Mayor has expressed this, it's a two-month pilot, we're going to gather data, take the compliments, take the complaints, and see what, if anything, should survive going forward as an innovative way to try and do something better, so it's worth giving it a go, at least from my perspective.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Cavanagh.
Appreciate the comments, Colonel Borton. I got to watch the last couple of weeks' public hearings on topic on this. Appreciate the comments. I still believe this is two separate issues, and I commend again the mayor for trying to think outside of the box to serve our employees and find new ways to meet their life schedules while also serving the citizens of Meridian. Although, I still have not changed my opinion that I think closing business early on Fridays is good for our community. I think it flies in the face of expectations of our public that we're here to serve them, and I think that a lot of people aren't reaching out on this because they haven't been impacted by it. And inevitably, when somebody shows up at 2:15 on a Friday and they can't access the services of city hall that they pay for, that's when they're going to be frustrated. I also think that we talk a lot about customer service in the Meridian way, and personally, I think that this is contrary to what we do day in and day out to serve our citizens. So I'm not supportive of closing shop early on Fridays. I'm happy to work with the mayor and our employees to find ways to stay open late until 6 o'clock, Monday through Thursday. I think that's a really, really great idea, but not at the expense of closing early on Fridays.
I think the beauty about this is that it's a pilot program, and if someone shows up at 2 o'clock on Friday and sees that they had an opportunity to do their business during another time that is actually more convenient, they will adapt. The cities that, in fact, one of the presenting cities, Westminster, Colorado, they moved to 410s, so they were closed on Friday, and they did not have negative feedback from the community, and what they did see is play retention, which was at 6%, changed to 3%. And so I think it's working with the community to see how it works, and then bringing back the data afterwards and saying, well, you know, we gave it a try, and it either worked or it didn't, but then at least you know why it did or didn't.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I appreciate the dialogue in regard to our citizens and if they, and their support, level of support in regard to this possible change. I've been contacted by some staff here at city hall, one in particular that was sort of confused in regard to the hours and the days and such, and suggested that we send out a Survey Monkey email to the city staff so they can, so they can offer up their opinion as well. So I think I mentioned, I don't remember, we've talked about this two or three times now, I don't remember, but in the past, I felt like it was important to not only reach out to the citizens, but also to reach out to our city staff, because they'll be impacted by this decision as well. So I would be in favor of reaching out to city staff before we make this decision. And another concern that I have is in regard to a pilot program that involves the entire city. I know that we spoke about this last week. I wish that we could find a way in which we could do a pilot program that involves maybe like a department or two before we totally change the hours of city hall. I just think that, I guess I'm not totally against it, but I just can't wrap my arms around why we can't just start it out at, you know, with one or two departments just to see how it goes. Those are my thoughts.
Well, and Mr. Burnt, I know you've mentioned the survey in the past, and I met to chat with you yesterday after the candidate forum, but our departments have been talking to their staff members all summer. We have been discussing this at the senior leadership level, and the directors have gone back to their teams and talked about it. And certainly, I don't know if the ones that have reached out were on vacation, or why they weren't part of that discussion, but I think there's a willingness from our departments and our staff and an eagerness to see how this works, and unless you give it a try, you'll never know.
Taken.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, given the fact that we've got early voting happening now, it made me wonder what would happen to it. me wonder what would happen to events that are currently scheduled for like a Friday afternoon?
Early voting actually had Saturday hours in the past, and they've opened City Hall, and they've, we haven't staffed it. They staffed the early voting.
Follow-up?
Mm-hmm.
But we do have staff to be in the building to have the building open?
They open the building. They do work with the clerk's office, get the key or whatever it is, and they can open up City Hall.
Thank you.
Ms. Mylum, did you have a question?
I did.
Did you forget it?
I'm getting old. I don't remember all of it, but I like the idea because it's a pilot program, and the only way you're going to know if it's going to work is to try it. I would be more comfortable if there were a way for people to get in touch with somebody, at least in the beginning, maybe the first couple of weeks, a phone number posted on the door for emergencies or for extremely important, or somewhere to leave a note so that we know that we're aware of how many people are coming by and unexpectedly finding City Hall closed and put off by it, enough to either leave a note or make a phone call. Otherwise, we don't know the answer to that question either. People might come, and they might get frustrated and leave, they might say, oh, it's no big deal, I can wait till Monday. But I think that would be an important piece of data to try to catch.
Can you call me?
Okay, we'll put Luke's number on the door.
Look yourself in the eye.
They can call me, I'll probably still be here, so we can figure something out in that regard. Mr. Kevner.
Maybe I missed this. Sorry, Dean, thank you. Madam Mayor, maybe I missed this, and we're talking about what the benefit would be, and I guess, maybe I've missed it. What is the benefit for our building being closed in the afternoons on Fridays? How does that benefit our citizens?
What we're doing is trying not to change the number of hours that City Hall is open. It's open currently forty-five hours. So we're taking the five hours or the four hours that were closed on Friday, and we're extending the hours to 6 o'clock, Monday through Thursday. Dean?
Madam Mayor, I can answer that question too. I feel like also, like from a private sector or business perspective, I think that when you have happier, more effective employees, I feel like maybe they'll be happier, therefore work harder. Not that our city staff doesn't work hard, I don't want to give that impression at all, but like, maybe generally just have a more general group, you know, better attitude. How do I say this? I don't want to make it sound like I'm saying that our city staff is feeling, but you get it, so.
Madam Mayor.
You get it, like going forward, they might be...
I think what the other cities have found that have modified their City Hall hours have found that there's greater flexibility in work schedules for all departments, including the smaller departments that don't have that flexibility to have front desk covered and that sort of thing. And because of that, and because of the younger workforce that would like to see, don't have an opposition to ten-hour days and three-hour or three-day weekends, it gives them greater flexibility for their work-life balance.
Good point.
Okay? So what do you want to do?
It's a vote. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Make a motion just to get this moving. I move we approve Item 9C, the modified pilot project hours for City Hall as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the pilot project. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
No.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
No. And I'll tell you why, Madam Mayor, if I can. If we don't have much unanimity amongst the council for this, a pilot like this needs our support to take the risk and gather the data and learn from it, and if we're divided on it, and I think we all need to be in the same boat to proceed on something like that, understanding it's a project that would have complaints, it certainly is going to have some folks upset as we learn what works and doesn't work. And I think in that context, to have us that divided on the issue is not healthy, so that's the reason I'm voting no.
Ms.?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kevner.
I don't know where this is going to go, but I'll move that we deny Item 9C. Or is it just a...
You don't have to.
So, Madam Mayor, a comment. I would hope that we can take this as an opportunity to take Councilmember Borton's suggestion. Let's poll our employees, let's send them a Survey Monkey. If the data that comes back from our employees matches what you're hearing from your leadership team, that's very compelling, and that's something that I would like to hear. On top of that, I'll reiterate my commitment to you to be willing to work with you and your team to see if we can be creative in terms of schedules for our employees so that they can get some of these benefits that I'm hearing are so important to them. I think this council has always been committed to our employees, and if this is a concern you're hearing from them, I want to work on that. I just don't want to address it at the expense of our citizens.
And we didn't think of it in terms of at the expense of our citizens. We saw it as to benefit our citizens. Those that came in during their lunch hour, they didn't have another option, and that is the feedback that we got. But certainly, I would agree with Mr. Borton. You know, it doesn't make sense moving forward with something that the council can't agree on. So moving forward, Item 9D is a public hearing for ordinance 19-1857, and this has been continued. I, we'll see if our chief has any, I know you have been up in front of council on this item a number of times. Do you have additional information or comment?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, I don't think you need to hear additional from me. I think it's been brought forward. I know a few of you have asked for some additional information that I've supplied, and I wasn't going to speak tonight. I would just request that we close the public hearing and take action on it, but I do have a couple of words to share. Tonight, three of you have an opportunity to define your legacy as it concerns public safety. You have an opportunity to define that in a positive manner. I urge your support. I look forward to your vote, and I thank you for the attention that you've given me over the last five weeks. Thank you.
Any questions for the chief?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, one item before you open up for the public's comment. If you'll notice on the ordinance that is in your packet, there is an effective date that is left blank. That was intentional, and I think I notified you of that earlier, that if your desire is to move this forward, I'd like you to select a date of effectiveness. Chief had mentioned we wanted some opportunity for educating the public if that's your desire to move this forward. So I wouldn't suggest approving this ordinance tonight, but if you want to move it forward to pick an effective date, set that for the first reading, give that one more opportunity for the public to at least be aware of it before you approve it. So that was my only suggestion on the effective date, just because it is blank, because that was the chief's direction, was to give some time, whatever that may be, to make sure there was some public opportunity to notice people that this was occurring.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, there are no sign-ins on this topic.
Okay. This agenda item is an ordinance that would prohibit the use of handheld devices while operating a moving vehicle or a vehicle, and I would ask if there's any testimony from those in the audience. Mr. Borton.
Mr. Nary's comments, are you telling us that we're prohibited from acting even if we included an effective date, or you just recommend we don't? Madam Member of the Council, Councilman Borton, you are not prohibited from acting. Since you hadn't noticed anyone as to when this would become effective, my suggestion was that if that's your desire to move forward tonight, make tonight the first reading, have it one more reading at least for next week so that there's at least some public awareness of this being enacted and when it would be. But it's not required. By statute, you can approve it tonight with that effective date, if it is going to be 30, 60, 90, whatever days you choose, that's certainly the opportunity to notify people as well. So you can move forward if you wish.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I have a question for Bill as well. I know we went through a couple of different versions of these, and I'm not, I don't have it open on my screen right now, so does this current version we're proposing, does it include while you're stopped at a red light, or is it just while the vehicle is in motion?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman Mylum, this ordinance, as it's currently drafted, prohibits the use of these devices anytime the car is in the lane of traffic.
Okay.
So if it is, whether it's stopped at a light or moving, it cannot be, you cannot use a handheld device, you have to be parked and off the roadway.
And I think that the reasoning behind that, and the chief has spoken to this, is a lot of our accidents because of destructive driving have been while a vehicle has been stopped and rear-ended because someone in front of them wasn't paying attention to the light turning green.
Madam Mayor. Chief said it's the reason for a lot of road rage, and I have to, I'm going to stand firm that it prevents way more road rage than it causes. So if you're stuck sitting at a traffic light for fifteen minutes, ten minutes, I don't know, sometimes on Eagle Road, that happens, and it allows you to move your mind from that and do something that you need to do, need to check, or people work in their cars and they can't be pulling over every ten minutes. It gives an opportunity, and yes, there are some morons, and there are going to be morons who do stupid things all the time and don't pay attention, but I think, and the people I've talked to, it helps more than it causes problems, so, sorry.
I don't know, most people I know that get behind a wheel are supposed to drive. And anyway, any other comments? Mr. Clerk, anyone signed up?
Madam Mayor, no one has signed up.
Oh, I think I've already asked that. Really? No one signed up? And are you sure no one wants to provide any comment? Okay. Counsel, this is now yours. Chief, did you want to have any further comment to...
Madam Mayor, Counsel, Councilwoman Mylum and I had a discussion yesterday, and we just have to agree to disagree, and I respect your vote of no. It was interesting, I heard a council candidate last night tell a story about road rage in regards to someone not getting off the phone when he was sitting behind, oh, I gave it away kind of, when he was sitting behind him at a light. So I disagree. We are getting road rages three to five times a week in regards to people not paying attention on the roads, but we can respectfully disagree. I think it's time for us to make a decision, either yea or nay, and we need to move on. We've had, I think, five or six weeks now, we've had four public opportunities for people to provide their testimony. I think it's just time to make a decision.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, Chief, what would be an appropriate time for beginning the ordinance? Would January 1 be too soon, just right?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Little Roberts, as I testified in the past, and one of the versions of the ordinance said that it would become effective as soon as it was posted, I think we need to make it effective as soon as we possibly can so we can start the educational process. That means that you would get pulled over, you just wouldn't get a ticket. So we are proposing that we not start writing tickets until after January 1, but if we don't enforce this ordinance or put it in effect, we can't even stop cars until after that occurs. So I wouldn't want to delay that part of it.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Why do we have him up here?
I can walk back, I'm not going.
We appreciate that you've been spending your evenings with us, and I understand last week you even gave up your son's soccer game.
It was a district soccer game, they're going to state. I did miss that. That was a little frustrating, but I'd like to say I'm over it. I'm not quite over it, and I wasn't going to come tonight, but I have too much invested in this, and I'm looking forward to a positive outcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Just one more point from what the chief said. The effective date can be immediate, but understand, it takes about thirty days approximately, between fourteen and thirty days, to get it through the system.
Yes.
Being able to be, a ticket to be written for them to actually stop anybody anyway. But I agree, we can make it effective as soon as possible, but the process still takes a bit to get it through the Supreme Court and on the schedule and in the system for tickets and all that, so it will take a little time for that anyway.
Madam Mayor, he is correct in what he's referring to, is we do e-ticketing, and everything is electronically, and so it'll take a while to update the software and stuff. But we can't do that until after the ordinance goes into effect.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Chief, really is action taken at this stage of the public hearing, potentially, one way or the other, or do we need to wait until the ordinance itself comes up on the agenda later on? Excuse me, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilwoman Borton, I would suggest waiting until the ordinance comes up, because you would actually have a reading at that point then. And then you, but you can certainly put the direction, if you want the direction, that our normal standard for ordinances is the language is that it's effective as soon as it's published, and it takes about ten days to get published. I can make that change while we're here, and we have it ready by the time you get to the ordinance if that's your desire.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we close the public hearing on 9D.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on 9D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, Item 9E is a public hearing on ordinance 19-1855. This is an ordinance prohibiting the use of compression brakes within the city of Meridian, and we did have conversations. We continue the item over to this to ask for additional public comment. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, my office received no public comment via email or phone, but you do have Bob and Louise Jones signed in this evening wishing to testify.
Okay, thank you. Welcome back. We're glad you came back.
Madam Mayor and the city members, we're glad to be received back. Thank you, Mayor, very much.
I just want to say, Bob and Louise Jones?
Yes.
And we reside at 3483 West Sandwich Street in Meridian. That's in Spurwing Green subdivision, which backs right up to Tindon Highway 2026 in Tenma.
Thank you.
Last week, there was a question brought up about what the objective was of this ordinance, and I don't think it ever got answered, but, so I just want to say that the objective is to improve the quality of life of those of us who are affected by the use of compression brakes. It's that simple, as far as I'm concerned. It's that simple, as far as I'm concerned.
So to build on that, we live about 100 yards from the intersection of Ten Mile and Chenden. That's a state highway, and it's a road corridor from the interstate down Ten Mile. So we get a lot of traffic from trucks, as well as other vehicles, of course. Look, going back and just really looking at what we're really talking about, I noticed that trucks that slow down before they get to an intersection that has a signal light often don't use their compression brakes. It's those that are barreling down the highway or Ten Mile, trying to get to the, the light, it looks like to me, so they can get through it. And they, of course, are going to use their engine brakes. I, you know, it's a 55-mile zone on Chenden, I'm not sure what it is on Ten Mile, but I estimate about three trucks an hour use their compression brakes. Now, our backyard is right there, close to the, that intersection, so it bothers us a great deal, so that's a personal thing. But I've driven down some of these other corridors, it's not unusual for these residences to be close to a signal light that's going down Ten Mile, Chenden, and so forth, and other places, Eustick, and so forth. I'm just thinking that if we had a few signs injuring into Meridian, on our corridor, it would be probably Black Cat and Locust Grove, east and west, and maybe coming down Ten Mile off the interstate. That would take a great deal of burden off of us. I think signs act as a deterrent. We can't expect an officer to be there to stop a person who, a trucker that's using compression brakes unless they just happen to be there. That's true of any traffic infractions. I heard last week that maybe the emergency vehicles ought to adhere the same. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. We get emergency vehicles that go down by us, but it's, they're not the big problem. The big problem are all the truckers that are coming by, and...
Ma'am, if I can ask you to summarize?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I think I just finished it up, so whatever questions you have of us.
It was timely, right? Counsel, any questions? Thank you for joining us again.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate that. Any further testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, since I testified on it last night and I'm here, I might as well testify again. The police department does not object to this ordinance. It'll provide consistency amongst the, the other cities and the county. The one thing that you'll have to determine is which department is going to be responsible for the signs and who's going to pay for those signs, because those will, will cost the, the city, and then the location of those signs. Other than that, we're in full support of, of this ordinance, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, and I think it was stated last week that ITD has offered the signs and to install them.
That would be great if they did. I know the ACHD, which would be Ten Mile, will actually make the signs, invoices for those signs, but they do install them for free. So there might be different protocols for each. I know we've had some signs put up in the past, and there's, they're about $40 a sign.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel, any further information needed on this?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we close the public hearing on item, item 9E.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing on 9E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize to interrupt, but if I may, for scheduling, to make sure we've got a full council with, with some time constraints, light of the hour, I would ask that we do an amendment of the agenda and move 10A and 10B to the new 9E1 and E2. So the ordinances that we just both heard and have been discussing for, for several hearings, we can take some action on while we're all present. Potentially take action on at least.
Okay.
Second? Just a request, I think.
Yeah. Okay, I, there is a, a motion and a second to move items 10A and B to this point on our agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that brings us to ordinance 19-1855 under 10A. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, is this the 19-1855? Is that what I heard? Okay. So, an ordinance prohibiting use of compression brakes within the city of Meridian.
That was a short title. Is there anyone who would like to hear it read in its entirety? I don't see any. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
This is, what are we doing? Are we?
Doing compression brakes.
Just, are we approving it, or are we?
If you wish to approve it or not.
With, we're not doing a suspension of rules, we're doing a first reading? We're going to three reading?
It's up to you.
That would be up to whoever makes the motion.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1855.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 19-1855. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
As I had said last week on this issue, I, I can't support it so long as we're exempting ourselves.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
For the benefit of the public, appreciate, I watched the, the public hearings on this while I was absent. I've struggled with this one. You wouldn't think that compression brakes would be a humdinger, but this one has been for me. I value the, the feedback of our transportation commission, but I, I've been unable to find what potential harm we create for our community by enacting this. I recognize the immense challenge we place on law enforcement to enforce something like this, but I'm a firm believer that the majority of the people will do the right thing the majority of the time. This signage can help with education, and if that can make an impact for, for some of members of our community's lives, I'm supportive. So appreciate the motion, appreciate the second, I'll be supporting it.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you. Then ordinance 19-1857, Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, it's an ordinance prohibiting the use of handheld wireless devices while operating a vehicle upon a street or highway within the city of Meridian.
You've heard this ordinance read by title, is there anyone who wishes to hear it read in its entirety?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, I have provided Mr. Johnson with the language for the effective date, that it would be effective upon passage and publication, which is our normal standard, if that's your desire, if you would include that in the motion. If you want a specific date instead, just include that in the motion, so he has the language for either option.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nary. Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton. Did Mr. Nary say something?
Speaking over each other. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to get discussion going, perhaps. I move we approve ordinance 19-1857, prohibiting the use of handheld wireless devices with an effective date upon passage and publication as referenced by legal counsel.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, do I have discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have had multiple opportunities to discuss this important issue, and, and we've been able to gather important data from law enforcement and an opportunity from our community, and quite frankly, a chance to discuss it amongst us as we've gone through this process. It is not a motion that I take lightly in supporting, but it is one that, that my enthusiasm for what this provides our community has been strengthened by the input we've gotten from the public, just around the community. I think about this kind of ordinance and what it can provide, and we talked at one of the earlier hearings about trade-offs, and one of the trade-offs that is important to me is the liberty of operating your vehicle is really important, but when you do that on the public streets, with all of our families and coworkers and friends on the sidewalks and in the streets with us, you do so with some heightened responsibility. We heard certain data from our law enforcement community, who is on the street daily, dealing with the accidents, dealing with the conduct that is created by cell phone usage, oftentimes with good intentions, but it absolutely leads to traffic accidents, it leads to fatalities, and our police and fire cut children and adults out of cars because people use cell phones when they drive. So when we talk about the effective date of this ordinance, and I think about the holidays coming up, and I think about difficult driving conditions, and I think about the cost to our community of waiting another day to have this opportunity for public safety presented to our community, public hearing time has run its course, and the time to act is now. I think the life that we save in December and January, we will never see, they'll never come here and talk to us, they will go home to their families and to their jobs, but I'm confident that will happen, and to have a little piece of responsibility to make that possible for that person who gets to go home, I'm all in. And if Meridian can lead the way in the Treasure Valley to do what's right, I'm all in as well, so that's the reason why I have been supportive of this process, have been appreciative of all of the public input in the grocery store and school grounds and work settings, and most importantly, for Chief Levy, to you and to your entire department and to our entire fire department, which deals with this daily, and makes our community one of the safest places in the state, if not the West, thank you for your efforts to make this a possibility. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I, I think that, in my opinion, Mr. Borton said it perfectly, and I won't go into as much detail as he did, but I wanted to also thank Chief Levy and his team for putting this together. This has been a tough one as well. You know, there's a debate between, you know, government overreach versus public safety, and after thinking about it, and after staying up at night a couple of times, bugging my wife with different type of questions in regard to this issue, I, I've, I've come to the conclusion that, that at the end of the day, we should not be using cell phones while driving. And it is, it's an addiction that is real, and, and in some cases cannot be controlled. I've sat at intersections multiple times and looked around, and, and in some cases, not all cases, but in some cases, I've seen the entire, every vehicle at an, at an intersection on their cell phones. And it's, it's a real problem, and the only way that we can fix it is by, by taking action this evening. So I, I, I look forward to being the leader in the Treasure Valley in regard to this, this ordinance. I call on our fellow municipalities that are nearby to, to have this type of dialogue within their settings as well. I will be voting yes this evening on this ordinance.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Had a really good discussion, both sides and from the public, I echo some of my colleagues' comments. Anytime law enforcement brings us an issue, I think it deserves the time and attention and strong consideration. I think we've seen that here tonight. I think when this was first brought up, Councilmember Borton said, there's no argument that distracted driving is a problem. I really think that for many of us, the, the wrestling has been with the, the consequence. While I'm not satisfied that the consequence is harsh enough, it does seem at least a step in the right direction. Counsel's benefit, you guys know, in my day job, I'd get in front of mayors and city council members, legislative members across the state, across the nation, talking about encouraging them to make strong policy decisions around public safety. And a big chunk of my work is not just bringing a good idea, but bringing a scientifically validated idea. If you do X, Y occurs. And the piece about operating motor vehicles while using your phone, the data is clear. The piece that I have wrestled with, the piece that I'm not supportive of, and I'm hoping maybe for a substitute motion, although I know we frown on those, is this prohibition of using your device when the vehicle is not in motion. Appreciate, the chief sent me two multi-hundred-page reports from the state of Oregon, I only was able to get through about half of one, and in there, again, the data is clear. Again, if, if my focus is here, it's not focused here. But I also know that if I'm trying to get where I'm going, if I'm stopped at a light using a map to type in an address, I'm not creating a public safety danger that I am when I'm operating a motor vehicle. And so because there isn't that scientific data to justify that piece, I'm opposed to that particular element. I think it's worth asking the highway district or the state to conduct a study to see if we can find some data behind that, and if that is justified, then I'm incredibly supportive. But I have to echo Councilmember Mylum's comments, with that particular piece, I, I can't be supportive of the ordinance. So if that's the ordinance that'll be before us, I will be voting in opposition to it, and wanted to at least have my explanation on the record. Again, I appreciate the work, Chief. I know this has been a marathon, and quite frankly, you're the most suited one to run marathons, not, not me, so I appreciate your endurance on this. I just think that we need to have better data before we kind of ready-fire aim on the, on the, while the vehicle's not in motion element.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I also echo the sentiments of Councilman Borton. I think that it is time that we get this done. I was on the fence about whether we should be able to use them when we're not moving, and I, being one that has a tendency to do something that has stopped light really quickly, a call or something, and this morning, as I was not on my phone, I had the privilege or the opportunity to see the person on my left and on my right, both on their phones, all of us stopped at a red light. Well, when the gentleman to, when the light turned for the turn on my left, he chose to remain on his phone or be oblivious to his light, saw it was yellow and proceeded to go through a red light so that he could make sure he still got where he was going and had missed his green arrow. The person to my right then sat there long enough that when the lights turned green, had to be honked at before they got off their phone and got moving. So this morning, my personal experience cleared that up for me, and I'm off the fence and prepared to move forward.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
To Councilman Cavanagh's comment on the, I, I get it, I do. I think I goes to keeping it as it is. I think the complete ban is what's appropriate, folks aren't challenged with trying to toggle back and forth, law enforcement isn't challenged with trying to articulate whether or not the usage started and stopped when they were stopped. I think we're going to err on the side of being more safe, and I think we're going to change some usage patterns, and the benefits outweigh the costs to keep it as is. I think we're going to err on the side of being more safe and I think we're going to change some usage patterns and the benefits outweigh the costs to keep it as is. Call for the question.
If there's no further discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
No.
Councilmember Burnt? Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
And I'll break the tie for an aye. I think that this is not a, this is a public safety issue and it's something that our youth council have been passionate about. And when they brought the texting while driving law to the legislature and came back to the city council after the legislature did not act, they asked this council to, to stand up for the right thing to, to do. And this council, well, not this council, the council at the time, said, "I, I think it's worth implementing. It's an issue in our community." And we helped work out some of the concerns that was behind a successful texting while driving. The chief has always said, "We never went far enough." But he also recognized that it was one step at a time. It's time. Because we continue to see that the, the burden of proof on, on our police. Are they texting? Are they looking at GPS? Are they looking up a phone number? Shouldn't matter. It shouldn't be in their hands. So I appreciate our police officers. I, I do, I do appreciate, Chief, the leadership you've had on this. And I do know, to Mr. Burnt's comments, the other cities are watching. They do want a copy of this. And I, I think there, there's some frustration out there from the people I've talked to and that was reflected in our poll that now is the right time. Thank you, Chief, for being with us. Okay, item 10F is a public hearing for H. 2019 dash 0102. I will open this. How many of you have not been at a public hearing before? Okay, I'm just going to briefly go over kind of our process. First, we open up with staff comments. They introduce the application. And then we ask the applicant if they have additional information. They have up to 15 minutes to present the application. After they have presented, we will ask our public if there's public comment. You have three minutes for your testimony. There is a time indicator on the screen at the podium to let you know where you're at in your time allocation. At, after everyone has provided their public testimony, we'll ask the applicant to come up and have any final remarks. But if there were any questions raised during the public testimony, that would be when they answer those questions. The council has an opportunity to ask the questions throughout the process. And certainly, I would remind you that there is public testimony and public record that this council's had an opportunity to review. And it is part of the decisions that they make. So with that, I will turn this over to Bill for staff remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to let council and mayor know that, that item 9F is actually, has to be continued this evening. Because there was an error with the neighborhood's applicant, the error did not conduct the proper neighborhood meeting. And they were required to continue that in order to complete that process so that we can move forward on their application. So again, we can't hear this one this evening. There's a procedural issue with it. So I'd ask that council just continue 9F until the November 6th hearing, please.
Okay, council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't know where we're headed. Madam Mayor, I move that we continue item 9F to November 6th, 2019.
I have a motion and a second to continue 9F to November 6th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9G is a public hearing continued from October 15th for H. 2019 dash 0091. And I'll turn this over to staff at this time. I'm sorry, Mr. Cavanagh.
If we can, before we turn over to staff, just, I want to be consistent. I mentioned through other public hearings that I've, I've watched the item online. With this item as well, I watched, I watched live online from my, my hotel room. I've had the opportunity to review all the public record. While I wasn't here for this last week, I, I am prepared and ready to vote should a decision be before the council here tonight. Just wanted to be on the record before we begin with staff comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I, too, also had a chance to read through the record just to get myself up to speed on this as I wasn't present at the last hearing. And our, one of our team members has left the city, so I'm picking up the pieces and making sure, taking this project to the end for him. But in looking at the public record, it was clear that council specifically continued this for one item, and that was to address the heights of the structures. You gave the applicant the opportunity to go back, work with their client, and come back with you to share with you what they would be comfortable with adding as a provision to the development agreement. I would also mention to council that there are a couple outstanding issues that we also need to take under consideration as you hear, the height component as well. One of those was, there were some discussions around keeping the pond and including that as an amenity. If you recall, the applicant had asked to replace the concept plan, removing the pond element from that, the process, the project. I believe Councilman Borton wanted to keep that in as an amenity so it gives this project a sense of identity on that particular, in this development. And the other issue was the applicant was going to connect with the micro path that was constructed with the bitter, I think it was the bitter brush point subdivision and tie into the pathway system along Meridian Road. So those are the items that I recall coming up. So in looking at some of the DA provisions that were before you this evening, item 10, provision number 10 and number 11, address keeping the pond as an amenity. Again, we'll see what the applicant wants to do with that, those particular items. And then if council wants to add a provision to the DA to limit the height within the development, then certainly we'd ask that you stick to the height in feet and not the number of stories, please. With that, I'd stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for Bill at this time? Okay, would the applicant like to comment?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jeff Wardle, I am counsel for the applicant. My address is 251 East Front, Boise Suite 300, 310 actually. I, too, was not here last week and I, too, have reviewed the video. And I think we can address this relatively quickly. We provided supplemental information and as I've had further discussions with your staff and with my client, I think we can get to where Councilmember Borton was guiding us last week. But first, let's just remember about this site. In 2002, in your comp plan, you designated this location for commercial development. The property was annexed in 2003. Development agreement confirming the CG, Most Intensive Commercial Zone, was adopted in 2004 with the site plan that contemplated kind of a Western theme. We fast forward now 15 years and in the interim, there was an amendment to the, to the development agreement in 2006 that modified some of the uses. But every use within the CG zone was permitted and the issue was one of design, that if you didn't stick with the cowboy theme, we had to come back with a conditional use permit. So recognizing, recognizing code changes, other concerns, design preferences, and the fact that our, our client has a different vision for it, we've come forward with this. So of issues that came up last week, flex space is an absolutely permitted use under the CG zone and under the existing development agreement. Your maximum height in the CG zone is 65 feet. We don't need 65 feet and we're not going to ask for 65 feet, but recognize that this is a concession the applicant is willing to make a condition with respect to height. Now, the basis for the amendment to this development agreement is the fact that we're here to modify the site plan. And we're here to modify the site plan to address a couple things. The first and most important is the change in access and the discussion that's been had with respect to ITD's approval of a right-in, right-out, being relocated farther to the south and getting rid of the existing temporary access that's at the north. Eliminate the Western theme design, eliminate the building size provisions, and to modify the site plan. Now, the sole issue, as I understand it, from the direction that was given by council last week, is really the issue of height. We are amenable to a reasonable height limit. But I was concerned by some of the discussion late in the hearing last week about what constitutes a reasonable height limit. And I don't want to be too technocratic, but I think Mr. Neri hit it right on the head. We're comfortable with your ordinance, but when we talk about height, we have to be absolutely clear because we don't want to be back here with you guys on another DA modification because of an issue of six inches above grade plane being off. So what is appropriate? Well, as has been presented, part of the focus here is for a mixture of office, retail, medical, flex space, reconfigured in the site. And we, there was some confusion last week about what the actual elevations are. So we made a supplemental submittal late last week. And when we talk about height, height is measured not necessarily to the parapet, not necessarily to the highest elevation. It can be an average. It can be a variety of things. So to be absolutely clear, the highest parapet on this building is in fact 28 feet, 3 inches. The actual roof deck is 21 feet, 8 inches at the highest and 18 feet at the lowest. So when we look at this, you see that, you know, you have a parapet on the south facade that exceeds the height of the roof by approximately seven feet to provide screening back to the public street. And I recognize there was some concern about screening and we'll get to that as well, although I believe that your UDC adequately addresses that issue. So there you have a rear look and you see that the height of the highest elevation of the roof, again, on the flat portion is 21 feet, 8 inches, but the parapet exceeds that. So we proposed a supplemental condition, condition 5.1, adding 14 and 15. And 14 being that no building on the property shall have a maximum building height that exceeds 40 feet, measured in accordance with UDC 15B1. And 15, outdoor mechanical equipment shall be installed consistent with UDC 113A12, which is your screening requirements within your development code. In discussing this, and Mr. Neri, your esteemed counsel, hit the nail on the head, there's a reason that we don't talk in terms of stories. We have had lots of litigiousness over what constitutes a story. We should talk about height. Because your code specifies that structure height shall be measured in accordance with the Meridian City Building Code as set forth in Title I, Chapter 1 of this code, which takes you to the International Building Code. And under the International Building Code, building height, height comma building, is the vertical distance from grade plane to the average height of the highest roof surface. Grade plane is a reference plane representing the average finished ground level adjoining the building exterior walls with certain other considerations. So our reticence to agree to a height that is exactly equal to whatever the elevations show is multifold. We proposed in our supplemental submittal, a 40-foot height. We think it's reasonable in the fact that the CG is a 65-foot height limitation and the R4 zoning immediately the east would permit a 35-foot height elevation. We also think it's flexible because we don't need to revisit it if there's a change in the floor plates, if there's a change in the design of the buildings. And also, we think that is a condition that's consistent with the UDC as well as the International Building Code. Now, in visiting further with your staff and visiting further with my client, we're prepared to agree to a 35-foot height limit in this project, which would be identical to the residential height, the height of any house that could be built in the R4 zone immediately next door. We think that's appropriate. It gives you flexibility to put a multi-story structure there if we need to. It gives us the ability to work within that definition of the International Building Code and your development code. Because again, this is a development agreement application. We're really early in the process. We haven't sought a CCC. We haven't come in with building plans. So the final grading of the site has yet to be established. The final configuration of some of these has yet to be established. So what we would propose is that no building on the property shall have a maximum building height that exceeds 35 feet, measured in accordance with UDC 1115B. With that, we, again, we think it's reasonable, flexible, and consistent. The property is already zoned. I mean, we could build, we could build flex cowboy buildings if we, if we chose to. We're amenable to these additional conditions and we request approval as recommended. And I think as Bill outlined in further conversation with my client, I mean, I think at this point, conditions 10 and 11 regarding the pond are, are fine. I mean, we can retain that for now. Recognize, again, there's elements of this project that'll come in a future application and we may have to address some circulation on Victory. But we'll revisit that at, at that point because Councilmember Borton's comments last week were, were well taken about why that was included. And the micro path was designed to comply with your codes and standards and requirements and to provide connectivity in that neighborhood as you've long envisioned. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you so much. Council, any questions? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, members of council, on your desktop is a link, Sign-in Dashboard, and that will show you everyone that has signed in this evening. You will see there are six signed in, of them two wish to testify, one was the applicant, and the only other sign-in wishing to testify is Randy Lasher.
I'll come back. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I will. Randy Lasher, address 267 East Observation Drive, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. And good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Last week was my first time actually addressing a city council group, so probably made more than my share of mistakes somewhere along that way. Hope I didn't personally offend anybody on the council. If I did, please raise your hand. Oh, are we good now?
I wasn't here last year.
She wasn't here.
Very good. Well, I think, I, I appreciate the comments from the attorney. I think we're still wanting to know, and that's really all this is, is just fact-finding, is what, what's the finished grade going to be? If a lot of dirt gets brought in, the, the whole height issue gets revisited. So as much as they're willing to concede to 35 feet, we haven't talked as a neighborhood how that would, how that would go. But we're back to finished grade. Where will that finished grade begin? And how high will, we know 30, if 35 feet is the number, how far down are we going in adding the soil? So I think, I think we need to probably determine that somewhere along the way because it could have a complete, different perspective on how high that building is going to sit. The other thing I'd like to say is, when you buy a new home, the builder's really good at pushing disclosures in front of you. If you're, if you're going to buy a home in an airport traffic zone approach, they usually tell you that. If you're buying a home in a flood zone, they legally, I think, are, are bound to tell you that. I personally, speaking for myself and my wife, would have liked to have known through some kind of disclosure that that property behind our home had the ability to build a 63-foot-high building. I could assure you, we probably wouldn't have bought that property, and I don't know how many of my neighbors would have felt the same way. So when the developer says 63 feet, they have the ability to go 63 feet, it sure would have been nice to have known that when we purchased our home. That's all I have. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Borton.
Randy, it's a great question. You're not probably going to get a detailed mathematical answer on the finished grade. But it very well could be the same finished grade at 35 feet as it would be at 65 feet. Point being that, that this entire process has done nothing but lower the potential mass that would have been behind your building. But there's not, there's not an answer that you'd get at this stage that would tell you that finished grade is this particular level now, as their council had described. It's just not there yet. But the, the one certainty you do have, if this were to go forward, is you've, you've reduced, or they've reduced by almost half what otherwise could have been put there. That's about, that's the only certainty that I think is available, which is a lot, but it doesn't answer the great question.
Yeah. Good point. Thank you.
And Mr. Lasher, I know it's, it's probably a question that many of our residents have. We do have a comprehensive plan that shows what the land uses can be. We do have an active map on our website that, that shows what's been approved and what would be allowed there. But really, real estate agents generally tell people what will be in your backyard. I had to learn the hard way as well with what was allowed in my backyard. Didn't know about a comprehensive plan. We've tried to make tools more interactive so people can use it. But your question on it would have been nice to know what was allowed in your backyard, we have that out there, but generally, the real estate agents are there to answer those questions if they're asked. And they then know where they can go to find out what is allowed.
Okay. And with all due respect, Madam Mayor, having been a real estate agent, we're not allowed to speculate, we're not allowed to disclose anything around property that we're not 100% sure is actually going to happen.
I, I think the timing, though, is this was approved when that area was developed, so you, you could have known.
Well, I, yeah.
Well, I'm not going to get into a debate.
I understand.
I would hope that our, our real estate agents would, would answer that question as truthfully as they can, and if not, you can, you can always call the city. And we'll tell you maybe not what has been approved, because it may be still in the county, but what would be allowed to be considered, and where to look to see when that comes in for approvals.
Gotcha. It would be a nice service if the city provided it at time of purchase, that kind of information.
It, it is available through, I, I believe that everything that we submit to the county is available out there.
Right. If we, if we go proactively seek it out, I agree.
So, I, I guess I'm going to go down a rabbit hole. Are, are you asking the city at every home closure to tell people what is allowed behind their house?
No, Madam Mayor. What I'm suggest, what I'm suggesting-
You, because we can't.
I, what I'm suggesting is any time a homeowner, especially someone who's new to the community, moved in from out of state, that whatever conditions exist around a community, whether it's flood zone, whether it's airport traffic over your home, it would also be nice to know what the, what the zoning and what the building height limitations are that could affect the back of your home. That's all I'm suggesting. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. And, and we do have all that information available. Mr. Kavner, did you have a comment?
Madam Mayor, maybe a comment. Just, Mr. Lasher, you answered, I think, my question, what it is that you would, you looking for, and I hear exactly, I think, what you're saying. Appreciate the suggestion. I, for council, but I don't know a mechanism that we could, to provide that, but I think I'll just commit, that's something I'm open to, to looking at. I don't know how we can get that to the county or to the state to get that provided. I do know, and I'm sure you know this, when it comes to disclosure day, there's a whole lot of paperwork that gets put in front of us, and I'm not quite sure if that'd be sold that every person, that's when they would finally learn what's going to be built next to them. I don't know what the, the state or counties allows us to provide that, but I'm open to at least ask them the question, finding out. So, I appreciate the suggestion.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. The only one that signed up? This is a, a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Mr. Wardle, any final remarks?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jeff Wardle, my address 251 East Front, Suite 310. No further comments. I think you understand the proposed conditions that we've laid out for you tonight were amenable to a 35-foot height limit. And while we understand the concern that has been articulated, I mean, the fact of the matter is, these residential properties are anywhere from 12 to 15 feet in elevation above this site. There will be some excavation, there will be some work, but this is not a situation where we're going to come in and fill this site and bring it up to, to their level. I mean, it's going to remain largely at the elevation that it currently is. And that's why, that's why when we talk about height, height is not a static number. It is based on a variety of things, and I would, we, I think, last comment, we're in, we, we've got to find a better way in this community to address development agreements because you guys spend way too much time on development agreement modifications. And it's something that, you know, I've talked with your staff, and I've talked with some of you, because this is a prime example, that we're here because a development agreement essentially tied us to a exterior design of a building. And I would, I would strongly recommend that in the future, we, we limit our development agreements to what are impermissible uses, what are limitations that go beyond what we normally find in our code, just so, so that we don't have to bog your agendas down and neighbors down discussing things that are largely esoteric based upon decisions that were made 15 years ago. So, we would request the modification as recommended by staff with the two proposed conditions that we proposed, with an adjustment of that proposed condition to 35 feet in height.
You do raise a, a good point, but I, I guess conversely, maybe something shouldn't last 15 years either and should allow the, the neighbors to, to weigh in. Maybe there should be an expiration date at some point so that people do know what is going on.
Well, you know, and, and to that point, Madam Mayor, I guess the, the concern is, all of us Wardles seem to be in front of you regularly on development agreement modifications that sometime are, deal with the most minute issues, just because of that use issue. And, and not to provide a lecture, but when Idaho Code 676511A was adopted for purposes of development agreements, it was designed and done with the intention that if a city needs to allow a zone change, it is conditioned upon certain commitments from a developer. Well, a lot of jurisdictions get too many things in what those conditions are. I mean, the conditions really ought to be the, the things that are going to go on and happen. I, I guess I disagree a little bit, Madam Mayor, with the suggestion that-
That's all right.
When property gets-
We've not always agreed.
When property gets rezoned, that, you know, in 15 years, we come back and revisit it. There needs to be some assurance that you can move forward, and, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these, a lot of these approvals, including for this development and the residential development where these neighbors reside, were pre-recession. Our development agreement was 2004, their subdivision plat was 2008, but many of those homes were not built for five, six, seven years. So, anyway, with that, we, we request approval. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
I just have one question I want to clarify, Mr. Wardle. He stated 35 feet a couple of times, and his slide says 40.
I know.
I just don't want a disagreement at some later point.
Correct. We had put in our, our written submittal late last week 40 feet. After discussing further with staff and my client, we agree 35 feet's appropriate. I just didn't have time to change the slide.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay.
Anything further?
Madam Mayor, City Council, a quick, quick comment. Mr. Wardle and, and Ms. Stewart also knows there are repercussions going above 30 feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, there are, there are code issues, and, and we're sensitive to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We close the public hearing on item H-2019-0091.
Second. From motion second to close the public hearing on item G, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Yeah, aye.
Aye.
There were a lot of ayes.
I said all ayes. Anything, like a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Borton.
I think this continuance has, has been helpful for everybody involved. I think the understanding what was already entitled on this property, I think it's helpful for the neighbors, as difficult as it might be, things preceded many or all of, of, of some of the effect on neighbors, but I'm supportive of, of this application, and in particular, the resolution with some certainty of this height as presented by the applicant here today with the 35-feet height cap. Again, I'm looking at it as a reduction from what could have been rather than up from zero. So, I think this application, modifying this development agreement makes several changes that make this, this development better than what it was before and, and more harmonious with the community. So, the fact that the pathway connection will be included, the pond will be retained as, and improved as an amenity, I think the access, the right-in, right-out, moving a little further south is appropriate under the circumstances, and the height, again, at 35 feet balances the considerations appropriately, so. Is that, I, I didn't move to, did I move to approve?
No. Mr. Borton.
I move we approve H-2019-0091.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Sure. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
One last little comment. Where's Randy? So, thank you, everyone, for participating and coming out. I think the input was really helpful, and Randy, we can talk offline, and then Mr. Kavner's spot-on about feedback. There's wayby ways we can do a, almost like a continuing legal ed with Realtors. And if you're a Realtor, come on in here, and we're going to talk to you about what you could be looking for to help provide better service to your clients. We're not doing the work, maybe we can help the, there's, there's ways we can use this as an opportunity to facilitate better relationships in these transactions in our community. So, spot-on for bringing it up. I think we can continue the conversation. So, I just thought it was important to note.
It is important to note because we do talk to the brokers, and I don't know how far that goes, and about tools that I, I think our planning department is constantly trying to provide better tools to get that information out there, so it is known. And, and so, yeah, if there is a better way, we're always open. So, thank you for bringing that up. Anything further from counsel? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. We've already heard H, and so, aye is public hearing on H-2019-01100. I will open this public hearing with comments from Bill.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is the gym prep, water and sewer vacation. This, this easement was created with the recreation of the Gramercy subdivision number one plat. The applicant is here this evening to vacate a 20-by-20 water and sewer easement, again, created with that subdivision. And the primary purpose for the vacation is, one, it's not, the water service that's, or the water main that's within that easement isn't needed, and so it needs to be abandoned per Public Works specifications. And once this is facilitated, then the applicant will be able to move forward with construction of, expansion of the existing school on the site. So, that's really what's driving the vacation this evening. Staff did route this to Public Works for their comments, and they are in favor of relinquishing the easement and having that water main abandoned per their standards. Staff is recommending approval, and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions from counsel? Okay, it's the applicant here. Would you like to comment?
Not unless there's questions or issues.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, any sign-ups?
My apologies, Madam Mayor, I'm getting there now. Sorry, I clicked the wrong link. I believe the only sign-in is the applicant. Katrina? Okay, yes.
Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I think that our scouts are fading. I don't see anybody wanting to testify. I move we close the public hearing on item 9I, H-2019-0100.
Second.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Move we approve item 9I, application number H-2019-0100 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion second to approve item I. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Item 9J is a public hearing confirmed, continued from October 15th for H-2019-0086. I will open this, I will ask for staff comments at this time.
Madam Mayor. We can't, I'll just interrupt. Just to remain consistent, I was absent as this was presented, had the opportunity to review the record, and prepared to render a decision tonight if presented.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the Nick Estates subdivision. It's a combined plumerie final plat before you this evening. The site consists of 1.4 acres of land, currently zoned R4, and is located at 1180 North 10-Mile Road. The comprehensive plan designation for this property is medium-density residential, which is, anticipates densities between three to eight dwelling units to the acre. The existing property is currently developed with the, the property is currently developed with an existing home, which is to be remained on Lot 2, Block 1, which you can see here at fronts on 10-Mile, and does have an existing driveway to, to that roadway, which is an arterial street. The applicant is requesting a waiver to keep, retain the existing access to that site, and then the four additional lots with the plat will take access from a common driveway. Both staff and ACHD shared with the commission that we did not support the existing access to 10-Mile Road to remain, as this was, one, our code prohibits access to remaining on arterial roadways, and it was safer for the existing home to take access from the shared driveway that's presented before you this evening. I'd also mention to counsel that there's an existing out, or accessory, detached accessory dwelling that will be removed as well, and you can see that in the landscape plan in the lower right-hand corner. So, the, as I mentioned to you, the comprehensive plan designates this as medium-density residential. The plat before you is just below that, below three units to the acre, at 2.84 units to the acre, so the applicant is also requesting a step-down intensity. Again, staff supports the request for the fact that it's zoned R4, and those dimensional standards, the specific dimensional standards in the code requires a minimum 8,000-square-foot lot, so what the applicant has drawn here is their kind of constraint with the land. So, in staff's recommendation, it is consistent, and we do support the step-down just because it is infill in nature, and there isn't much other, there, there aren't any other design options on the site to get additional density on that, to get that up, to increase the density on the site, consistent with the MDR designation. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this project. Speaking in favor was Aaron Rush, who's the applicant's representative, and then we also had the owner, property owner, Elizabeth Terance, speaking. No one testified in opposition, and no one commented on the application. Aaron Rush did submit written comments to the staff report in agreement primarily with the conditions, but at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did discuss the cross-access with the property to the north at, at some length here. So, one of the recommended conditions in the staff report is that they grant cross-access to the property to the north because it, too, is a single-family home with access to 10-Mile. There may be a potential for that to develop with additional units in the future, and so, and- No one testified in opposition and no one commented on the application. Aaron Rush did submit written comments to the staff report in agreement primarily with the conditions, but at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did discuss the cross-access with the property to the north at some length here, so one of the recommended conditions in the staff report is that they grant cross-access to the property to the north because it too is a single-family home with access to Ten Mile, there may be a potential for that to develop with additional units in the future and so, and consistent with our access policies in the code, we wanted to make sure that we provide another option for that property owner to share this driveway. And then also, there was discussions with the addition of a street light that was required from Public Works Department located within one of the common lots along Ten Mile Road. So key issues, the commission required the cross-access as required by staff and then I know the applicant worked with Public Works to try to determine if they could relocate the street light on an existing pole in the area, I'm not sure if that was ever reached or agreed upon, I'll let the applicant weigh in on that. But since the Planning and Zoning Commission, the only written testimonial email that I've received is from the applicant in agreement with the conditions of a staff in agreement with the commission's recommendations, again, they may still want to have you take under the consideration the access to Ten Mile Road, the requirement for cross-access and then the street light. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions? Is the applicant here? Thank you for joining us and sticking with us, if you'll please say your name and address for the record.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Aaron Rush, A-A-R-O-N-R-U-S-H. I work for LR Geomatics at 2850 West Merrimott Street here in Meridian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill, for taking over this project. I know that you got left with that, so I appreciate you staying on top of it. We are in agreement generally with all of the conditions that were given to us, with the exception of the couple that Bill mentioned, and part of the reason for this is this is a family development, so again, they did not go as dense as they could have on this project. It's zoned R4, they probably could have went even denser with a rezone potentially, I don't know if that would have been supported, but they are actually doing a step down in density and they're not doing this to profit from the property in any way, this is a mother and her three sons that are going to occupy these lots. They're doing this with their own money and they're, again, like I said, they're not looking to profit and so, some of the conditions I could understand from a development perspective, like for instance, the street light, you know, again, that's, that's Public Works and I don't want to get into the whole deal with that. We are going to work with ACHD to try to get that street light mounted on an existing overhead crosslight, but again, that is going to have to go through ACHD and that's something that is an ongoing thing. From the city's perspective, the Public Works, Al Christie wanted them to install a new light with a 12-foot mast arm like you see every 200 feet in front of new development along these arterial streets. Currently, this property is 205 feet wide and there's one at the north end, so if it was five feet shorter, they would not have to do it and actually, the subdivision that was developed to the south of them, that requirement was waived and so, I kind of feel like that my client got kind of stuck holding the bag on this and is now having to fund, you know, yet another thing, a $6,000 Public Works improvement tacked on to their private development here. The other item, which was Public Works, or, I'm sorry, it was the staff's, planning staff's comment, number eight, in regards to the ingress egress, so they want, again, this 20-foot access easement to serve the property to the north so that if that property ever was developed, that they could close down the access there and take access through here, sticking with the city's policy on limiting access to these arterial streets. And I think that we would probably support that, however, this road is not going to be even a private drive, it's going to be a shared access drive and currently, the limit on that is six, six lots can take access off of a shared driveway and so, if they developed that piece to the north with more than two parcels or two lots, then it would require a change in the nature of the road to either a private street or a public road, which I doubt that would happen, but at any rate, it would definitely cost somebody some money to improve that, make changes to the road, and again, you know, they're not really looking to have traffic come through here and so, I don't know, I mean, we know that right now, there's no plans for them to develop this piece of property to the north and if they do, I think that we would want a condition or some sort of supplemental condition on that requirement that would limit this development to two units, if they were going to take access off it, so, access off of it so that it wouldn't change the nature of the driveway that we're proposing, the shared driveway, we don't want to change the nature of that and reclassify it to a private road and so, I don't have a pointer, but, well, I guess I kind of do. So this would be where it's, this would be where it's at, right here, and so if this is ever developed, then they would want to close this access, which actually, I feel like is a good access because it's in line here, distance-wise, it may not meet distance requirements, I don't know, but it's close, but the city would prefer access to come through here and this will be where the new driveway is, but at any rate, if we could get a condition or supplement the condition to limit that to two lots and for all expenses associated with the design and the construction of that access to be on this party, then I think we'd be fine with that, but I'm not sure how we'd go about doing that, Bill, I don't know if that, does that require like a development agreement or what is, how do we do that? How do we get that in writing?
Mayor, counsel, if I may, address the applicant. Essentially, all we're requiring is the easement when this property to the north comes in and develops further or redevelops or does nothing, so if something happens to the property to the north, then at that point, that owner and this owner will work on those, negotiate who does what at that time. We're not requiring the applicant to construct a driveway at this point, we're just asking them to grant the easement because it may change, it may happen, it may not happen, we don't know if this property will redevelop. What we don't want to do is just be blind on the issue and then all of a sudden, next week he comes in and they want to tear it down and do a fourplex on there and now we're, our hands are tied and we have to allow them to have access to Ten Mile Road, so, or at least we have to, the reason why we brought it up in the staff report is if anyone comes in to develop this piece, we're going to tell them, you have access to the common driveway, code restricts up to six units off a common driveway, you're only allowed to do two units on this property maximum, to be consistent with that access to the common driveway, so again, those are things that'll be worked out down the road, we're not asking you to construct anything, all we're saying is grant the easement, so in the event that northern property wants another unit on the back half, they can have rights to that and not impede Ten Mile Road, which is a major, it's basically, it's a corridor through our community, it's a major corridor, so we want to limit accesses to that roadway.
Thank you, Bill.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, and I guess, you know, from our perspective and the applicant's perspective on that would just be that this, this does place a burden on them to potentially deal with that down the road, it's a encumbrance on the property that will last in perpetuity on this piece of property and I feel like that there isn't a mechanism for them to protect their interest on when or when that is not going to happen. At some point in time, they are going to have to enter into negotiations with somebody on who's going to pay for this and how it's going to be done, so with that, I'll end my spiel here and turn things over to, to the owner applicant if they, they may want to come up and share a few words.
Okay, counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Maybe just a comment to that concern, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, you provide the easement as part of this application to the north and that's the extent of the obligation, you still hold all the cards if at some point in the future, property to the north develops and as a condition of its development needs, because of its size, it needs to take access to the south, that applicant would come to this property and there's an easement, but nothing would prevent you from saying, you can, you've got access, you can build the whole thing. You don't need the road, if the property to the north needs the road, then they can build the whole road, you're just providing them the ability to cross your parcel, so I don't know if you're necessarily losing leverage at that future date, if that at least softens the blow at least on.
I just, I know that there will be some challenges with putting a driveway there, there's an irrigation line that crosses there, so there will be some logistics, you know, as far as working out a license agreement with the irrigation district, making sure the pipe isn't too shallow in order to be able to support a road, so there'll be some design components with that and, you know, I would, I would hate for my client to be forced into having to deal with that, but if there was a way that we could just ensure that that not be the case, then I think we'd be more comfortable with it, but I understand your perspective, you know, I think it just comes down to a matter of interpretation on what does the easement mean, you know, and maybe I can, you know, the way that I reserve that easement on the plat, I can get kind of crafty with the language on that and what that easement actually means and what it doesn't mean and so, we'll look at that when we, when the time comes to, to address it on the, on the plat itself, because right now, it's not addressed.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could just assist the applicant on how he can address that, my recommendation is I wouldn't graphically depict it on the plat. So many times, what happens is, is if we create easements with plats, we come back before you to undo easements and we don't want to do that case, he has the ability to record a separate document outside of the plating process, include a note on the plat that references an instrument numbers, an instrument number that they can control how that's guided in that, to me, in that cross-access agreement, he can say, only single-family homes can access or have the right to this easement and they can work those details out as they record that, don't put it, leave a blanket easement with a plat note, I would again advise him, certainly that's something that we talked about, the P and Z commission, that he can certainly work with staff and we can run that up the flagpole with our city attorney's office, when he's ready to prepare a draft agreement, we could share that language, make sure we're on solid ground and move forward with that, but certainly, it is a private agreement, we don't try to get involved, all we say is dedicate or at least provide the easement, again, the gentleman there may not ever do anything with it and may never be, go into effect, so certainly, we've seen it where there's sunset clauses, we've seen it where people have limited the uses on that, that no more than two single-family homes can take access or right to that easement. Again, we can leave, we can be flexible with the applicant, what we don't want to do is create additional accesses to Ten Mile Road because we know Ten Mile is getting busier and busier every month, every year, and having something at least in place to look at now and just thinking about long-term viability of the property to the north, it's the right thing to do at this point.
Thank you, any other questions at this point? Mr. Clerk, any other signups?
Madam Mayor, there's one sign up, Nick Shear.
Hello. I'm Nick Shear, I'm the co-owner on this property with my mother and also my brothers on this, how you doing?
Thank you for being here.
No problem. I was just wondering what you guys would want from us to speed up this process, what else we can do? Anything comes to mind? Hopefully, the, it's very simple, the easement we're working on to the north and goes from there.
Well, you're in front of us and, and counsel should take action and so then you will move forward.
All right. I don't have much.
Thank you, we always love someone to come up and say, how can I help?
Yeah, whatever.
Or how can we help?
It makes it go faster, I guess. Thank you for your time.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Just regarding the street light, as the gentleman said, if we could make it faster, I think that's probably a good segue for me to say, the fastest way to meet our, our requests would be to build a separate street light. I'm looking at the conversations that Warren Stewart and Al Christie have had with the applicant regarding the street light requirements, which are pretty clear in the design standards and whether a light placed on the ACHD pole for the pedestrian signal would work, their preference is clearly to do a separate light, it would take some sort of agreement with ACHD, it would take some assurance that the whole foundation that was done for the pedestrian signal would be adequate for a light and it would take a separate electrical service, so both because it's what the Transportation Utility Quarter and the, and the city engineer have requested and because it's a lot simpler, we're recommending that the applicant put in the standard light as requested.
Well, I think there was mention that someone was not required to put in a light?
Madam Mayor, I did hear the applicant say that and I'm not aware of that, I haven't, I've been briefed on this by Al and by Warren, didn't hear anybody say that anybody's requirement was waived, the text I see here says that dozens of people, dozens of applicants have had to do this similar, in a similar fashion than this applicant. I did look at the subdivision to the south and noted that the, that subdivision to the south was put in in 1999 and we didn't have this design standard, so maybe that's the case, but I didn't, I don't know of any, any development where this requirement has been waived as of late.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony? Aaron, is there any final comments you would like to make? Okay, counsel seeing no further testimony or comment, what would you like to do?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
More question for Kyle, is this the type of street light that might be analogous to some of the street lights that we fund and put in? In, is this our regular street light program?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, I don't know the answer to that, I know that we do some special projects that are safe routes to school projects and this project, or this location happens to be on a school route, whether it's analogous or not, I'm not quite sure what that question means, but it's a similar street light.
I'm just, Madam Mayor, it's prompted the question, it's a small infill type lot and if not this one, these seem to be the opportunities where if we have a street light program where we participate to fill in challenged areas or incentivize development of challenged areas, trying to come up with some way we can provide assistance, we don't see this kind of stuff, so it's not, I don't think, creating a precedent, but if unique circumstances exist, you got a really small lot, which makes the expense proportionally big, can our own program be utilized or modified to help in those situations? We're talking one light.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Borton, I guess the only response I can, I can come up with for that is, is Al Christie's words, I do not see how your client's property is different than any other subdivision.
That's an answer.
There, there is no doubt that there is a light needed out there, there was a horrific accident in, in that area and it isn't well lit, but, so, lighting is needed.
Idea.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move we close the public hearing on item 9J.
I have a motion second to close the public hearing on item 9J, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes? You're waiting for me to ask if anyone would like to make a motion on this? I just did.
Buddy? Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
So I posed the question, it didn't get a lot of dialogue. I don't know if there's even any interest in the idea of not waiving the light requirement because it's not necessary, but trying to solve that problem a different way, utilizing our existing program in these really small, unique, kind of infill-y sort of situations. If that's a terrible idea and it opens the door, speak now, because I'm missing it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't think it's a terrible idea. I mean, the fact of the matter is, lighting is needed there. If we were to deny this project, lighting need would still be there. If the applicant's unable to do the lighting, I agree, I don't think it makes sense at this particular spot, adjacent to this particular application. I just don't know the mechanism for us to say, as part of our light program, because this is a small infill and a challenged area along a school route, let's put a light there as part of our streetlight program. I just don't know the mechanism to do that. So hoping some of the smarter members of the council would figure it out and I can just agree.
Madam Mayor, I'm just coming up with an idea here. I guess there's lots of places around the city that have deficient lighting, lots of them. And we've got only a couple tools in the drawer. And I think the most important one is the requirement of development tool. We get far less money to fix the deficient lighting every year than we have deficient lighting areas. So if we were to rely on our funds only, the way we're funded now, to fix every one we find, we won't fix them, I guess.
So your tools are, as areas redevelop or as council funds, the recommendations in the priority area are ordered?
Madam Mayor, I believe that's correct. It's either making these improvements when development happens or making them according to that program.
I just don't know. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Certainly makes sense, and there has to be some way that we can help these guys, so.
So as Mr. Burton said, if there's concern of precedence, what considers when you will say, "We want to pay for a light," and when you wouldn't? Is it two acres and less? Or is it, I mean, I think staff would like to have some kind of sideboards on, if we're going to set a precedence to start putting in lights as areas redevelop before the recommendation through a program that was established to identify priority areas to put safety lighting in, we probably should, or I don't care. I mean, I'm gone in two months. But if you don't want to set a precedence, maybe you should discuss why this and not the next application. I don't want to sound insensitive, but I do want to make sure that we're not opening up, that we all of a sudden become the lighting funding source for every development that comes in front of us, because we do need lights.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I guess I don't think that we are setting any type of precedent. We fund a light program to serve areas that need additional lighting. If we need, I feel like every year I say this, if you guys need more money in your budget, street lighting is a program I am so supportive of. If you guys need more money, bring that to us. So if we're not funding it adequately, I think that's a conversation that needs to happen at the budget, and I'm open to having that like I am every year. Again, if we're setting a precedent, I guess we're setting a precedent that we would maybe use our lighting program to build a light on small projects near school zones where there have been accidents. I mean, I feel like that we are so overcomplicating this tonight, folks. I mean, to me, this seems like such a common sense thing to do, and I don't know why we're not able to figure it out.
I guess because every decision that is made then opens the door to the next one. And so if you want to do this, exactly what you just said, set some sideboards to say it's three acres or less, it's in a route to school, and it's where we've had some horrible accidents, I'm good with. I think that staff could work with those kind of guidelines, but be prepared to fund the next light. I, we're just saying, we've never had this request before, where someone says, "Oh, you don't want to pay for it." Well, we will, government, we will pay for it.
Madam Mayor, I'd have to agree with that.
Every year, good grief.
I'd have to agree with that sentiment. There's a lot of smaller lots on arterial roads. And how big does a lot have to be? I think we had this conversation for a long time with the car wash on Fairview, or deciding to require a streetlight.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I closed the public hearing, right?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve H-2019-0086 and to include the cross-access as most articulately described, the cross-access easement requirement is included. Mr. Parsons described it very well, as far as the flexibility that could be afforded to accomplish that goal. And waive the requirement of a light at this location, a singular waiver that won't happen again until we can articulate, well, we want to be clear, there's your sideboard, until we can articulate more clearly some parameters, as narrow and tight as they might be, where that might ever be utilized again. But in this very specific project, I think it's appropriate.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And Madam Mayor, I think the idea of utilizing and maybe focusing some portion of our streetlight program in a way to encourage infill in these very narrow, challenging circumstances, maybe even more narrow than this application, is a way to use it as a positive tool. So glasses half-full on what it could be. For now, it's a one-and-done with some homework for us.
So which light are you removing? Not the light on the traffic, the pedestrian one, right?
It's the obligation to put the light in. I think the pedestrian was an option.
Wasn't there two lights?
Madam Mayor, there's an existing pedestrian crossing, and they were just being asked to put in one.
It's where to put it. Okay. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Madam Mayor, before we call roll, just clarification on the motion. Please provide clarification on the request for the step-down in density and then also the access to Ten Mile Road, please.
Madam Mayor, the step-down is, yes, access to Ten Mile.
We need to agree to easement.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the existing home has an access to Ten Mile Road, and we want that to be closed and it to take access. So the existing home on Lot 2, Block 1, needs to take access from the shared driveway as we have a condition...
Waiver of that, okay.
Yeah, they were asking for a waiver of that. Both staff and ACHD didn't support the existing access remaining, so we just want to make sure that either you support staff or grant the access, we'll leave it in your court at this point.
Support staff.
Yeah, so, Madam Mayor, do that. So that waiver of that UDC provision 11-3A3 accomplishes that goal, the motion includes that too.
Second, again.
Good catch.
With an amen.
You found God tonight. Okay, anything further? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Okay, item 10C is ordinance 19-1858. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This ordinance related to H-2019-0006 Three Corners Ranch for annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of the northwest one quarter of Section 29, Township 4 North, Range 1 East Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 31.104 acres of land from RUT to R4, medium-low-density residential zoning districts, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, you've heard this red title. Would you like to hear it read in its entirety?
No.
No, you don't want to say that.
Man.
We're good. Perfect. Yeah.
You can go home. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 19-1858 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10C. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 10D is ordinance 19-1859. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this ordinance?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
By title.
By title, thank you, and then, thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance related to H-2019-0058 Silver Spring subdivision for annexation of a parcel of land situated in the north one-half of the northeast one-quarter of Section 31, Township 4 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use classification of 5.19 acres of land from RUT to R4, medium-low-density residential zoning district, in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, counsel.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 19-1859 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 10D. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes. Anything under our last item, 11?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Madam Mayor, I hate to bring this up. I wanted to wait till we were done with the ordinance. It is not required by Idaho Code that we post signs within the city regarding hands-free phone usage, but some of our Idaho cities have. And so you may want to ponder, not for tonight, but for a future discussion, do you want to do that and provide that around the city? Now, again, the cities that do this are like Haley and Ketchum and that area where they've passed an ordinance like this, but they're much smaller and their entrances and exits are much more limited than Meridian. But I wanted to at least put that out for you to consider. There are obviously costs to signs. ACHD will normally put them up for us for no cost, but they will charge us for the signs themselves. So something to ponder for the future, as we want to roll this out as another educational tool.
Yeah, I think that the chief mentioned the signs in his first testimony, that they were very helpful in letting people know.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, when I went up to do the presentation in Sun Valley, it's the first thing you see when you're coming into town is, "We're a hands-free city." So very helpful.
Anyway, I just wanted to raise that for a thought for the future discussion, because obviously there'd be numerous areas we'd have to put that if we were going to try to do that, and there would obviously be a significant cost to it. But anyway, I just wanted to raise that while it was still fresh.
Anything further? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to make a motion?
Love to make a motion that we adjourn, yes.
I'd like to make a motion right now that we adjourn this...
Excuse me, before you do that, I'm sorry, I know we're about done, but I just, I should have asked this at the last, Madam Mayor, Councilman, Baron, I'm sorry, I should have asked this, on that last item, is it your desire as a council, just to follow up, that we put in a streetlight with this project? Or put in a streetlight as soon as possible at that location?
I have no idea what the intent was, so maybe Mr. Burton can answer that question.
Madam Mayor, I think we'd look for your recommendation on what options there are. We couldn't articulate whether we had the authority to direct it to be put in, so we didn't. But understanding there's a need, you could probably come back and say, "Here's what we could do and win."
I guess I'll have to pass it to Al and just say that a streetlight was, requirement was waived for the project, and ask for some guidance from you guys, because I think he'll probably say, "Well, there's a lot more important places I can put streetlights."
Kyle, just have him, you have a rating system, have, go through the rating system, and then if you could just email counsel on what the finding is.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, sorry, I didn't bring that up earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Burton.
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to adjourn this city council meeting this evening.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Madam Mayor.
I had a motion and a second. Do you have discussion, Mr. Burton?
I was going to just do a substitute motion, I could, to adjourn the meeting in lieu of your motion.
I second that.
It's what happens when we go past eight o'clock these days.
I second that motion.
Call for the question. Let's go home.
Let the record reflect, Councilman Burton's laughing.
I'm not laughing.
And what was your substitute motion? Will you please repeat that on the record?
To adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn what?
The meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.